Mr. Andre.
Here.
Mr. Gayheart, here. Mr. Gatten, here. Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Reckles.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
Ms. Colton.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Do you have a forum? We will continue. It's nice to meet you. This is not his first day statues. Good night. Do you have any community participation? Well, you've heard this the speaker before, so you might just say your name and then go ahead.
Is anybody else want to speak? I wasn't sure if that was.
Wow, you're the owner of this room.
I'm the owner. My name is Steve Perkins. And, you know, a few weeks ago, it said to me, it's very, very serious, and there was a question that was asked with potential candidates for joining our school board, is what do you see as the most significant external threats to the success of our schools and students? I come at this with a heavy heart. It's been bothering me since I got an email from the school district. And I do think that there are certain things that are outside that come in, and that they do pose a threat to our society, and our neighborhood, and our school, and our children. And they post questions like, have you ever tried to kill yourself? Have you ever seriously, you know, it's a poll, seriously thought about killing yourself? Have you ever made a plan about how you would kill yourself? If I didn't open up that email, and I didn't read everything there, and I didn't click on the link, which I know statistically speaking, most parents in our neighborhoods did not. My son would have been asked those questions in sixth grade. That is not a question that anybody in the school should be asking our children, or anybody from the CDC should be asking our children. And that's something that as a school board, I understand your response, Jason, to this, which when asked if Elkhorn could opt out, you chose to highlight red. They are not mandatory, but for the data to be relevant, schools are asked to participate. In some cases, grants and/or other support dollars do require participation to verify progress. What kind of progress are people looking for, and how much money is worth that data? I asked the board to revisit the 2003 decision to participate in those types of surveys, and really consider whether or not it's worth any money coming from the federal level or the state level, when questions like this are asked to middle school children. Children. I also said I I'm not going anywhere. Those are the children I have in the school district. And I also said it quite for them. I had to say you guys do too.
Thank you. Time that really was. Anybody else? After we ended, so we'll move on to election of the school officers. We do this every year after the election. We reorganize. As the president, I have to turn it over.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for nominations of the office of presidents. Any nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to close the nominations.
I'll make a motion to close the nominations.
There a second? It's been nominated, or Mrs. O'Donnell has been nominated, and the motion to close the nominations has been seconded. Now I'd like to ask for a majority vote to be cast for Mr. O'Donnell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mr. Gatten, no. Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
This is Reckles.
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
I'll accept.
Who was the, I was admitting the person online, who did the motion to close?
Uh, I did the motion to close, and Heather seconded it.
Who is it? Never seconded. Okay, thank you. All right, I'll take back over. Somebody to move forward with Vice President, looking for a nomination for Vice President. Nominate Julia. And we have a nomination of Julia. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none. I would ask that if you have a casting majority vote for as Vice President, to close the nominations.
Motion to close now. Oh yeah, we gotta close first.
You can do both at the same time, so there's no other nominee.
Okay.
So, looking for that motion.
Motion to close now.
Second. Second. All right.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mr. Gatten.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Next, we need a treasurer. Looking for a nomination for treasurer.
I'll nominate Devin.
Other nominations? I nominate Kevin Gayheart. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, hearing none, like to get a motion to close the nominations.
I'd like a motion to close the nominations.
How's that?
All right, since we have two nominees, we can do a the one time ever in business of school boards, we can cast a vote honestly. Write down your vote. Right. Devin, you're it. Next, we need clerk. So looking for those nominations. I nominate Scarrow. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to close the nominations and cast majority vote for Scarrow.
I'll make a motion to close the nominations.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded to close the nomination and cast majority vote for Scarrow as clerk.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mr. Gatten.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Lastly, we need a deputy clerk. The deputy clerk would serve unable to serve for case based on so looking for nominee for deputy clerk. No, we have it.
Sorry.
We have a nomination for deputy clerk.
I'll nominate Adam.
The nomination of Adam, deputy clerk. Any nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none. All right, so I have to use our, probably, first I will do our vote to close the nominations.
I'll motion to close the nominations.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Move the second to close the nominations. Roll call, please.
Hello, Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mr. Gatten.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Adam, you're it. That's it for that. So moving on to minutes from April 10, 2023. Test your agenda. Questions on that? And I feel you are here. We're trying to get us down on our escape. Are you in the audience?
I was in the audience, yes. I was gonna ask you if I could state anything.
Yeah, you can. I just, it says also president's standing.
Yeah.
Any other comments on?
Yeah.
All right, hearing nothing, looking for a motion for second. Second. So moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the April 10, 2023, ready to session school board meeting. Have modified. Roll call, please.
Mr. Andre.
Out of state.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mr. Gatten.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles. And Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Colton.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
The part discussion I know is student report.
Then we have the
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say. General.
That's why I said quick to it. General other fund bills, Mr. Truitt.
Yeah, general other fund bills, this meeting covers checks number 149105 through 149192, wire transfers 904 through 914, ACH number 661 through 674, combined amount 271,549.92. There's a memo providing some information on several of the bills in your packet, and then a copy of the treasury part of the market margin.
Questions, Mr. Truitt? I got a few if we can go through them real quick. And forgive me if some of this is we've done for the first time going through it, but I'd say I got eight line item questions. First one is check number 149112, this is FS repair.
That's one of our food service vendors. So they do they supply like chemicals for dishwashing, and they do some repair, minor repair of some of our equipment. I think there are three invoices involved with that payment. And one of them was for sanitizer and detergent for product that they use as their dishwasher machine. The second one was to repair a warning unit at Tibbetts Elementary School. The third one was for economy element repair at the high school kitchen.
Cool. I'll give you three. Next one would be the city of Elkhorn, it just says cross $25,000.
Yeah, there's actually two payments there. One is for crossing guard services that they provide, but the larger one is for the school resource officer, or the police liaison officer. So we have an agreement with the city, and our share is like 65% of the annual cost for that.
Cool. Just wondering where.
Yeah, I think flip the order to the second page.
This doesn't make good sense. Next one is gonna be, and the reference was great, it helped a lot. Next one is gonna be Southern Lakes Media for media events, notice the referendum. And that's gonna coincide with a later charge of $3,000. So we
It's for like certain publications. So the Southern Lakes, I think, would have been for our minutes for publishing, like the referendum. And then the ones in quarrels is our, what they call our bond council, our legal council, so they prepare those actual resolutions that the public is part of the referendum questions.
Okay.
And then they have to verify that we do the necessary posting and all of the record keeping related to the election. Also, that's kind of their, basically, they sign off that we followed all the proper procedures.
Okay. Just a couple more, I promise. Bulk mailing, Community Connect. $1,000.
For the US Postal Service.
Yeah, the Community Connect, is that for, that's for the same thing, or is that for a separate?
That would have been for Community Connection. So, so we have a bulk mailing permit with the US Postal Service, so when we do a do a community mailing, they will then debit that account, getting set up with the post office to take in postage.
And Bill, that goes out what, three times a year or something?
Ah, four.
More than four?
Four, yeah.
$6,200 to the Aldis County Health Human Services, description is mental health.
Mental health navigator?
Yes. Actually, so it seems to be Mental Health Navigator, March, is that a monthly?
It's a monthly one. That's for, like, the social worker works at our CCA program, so we have a contract with the county on that, we pay a portion of that.
So it works like the SRO office. Okay. Where actual employees of the county.
It's a joint, it's a joint effort.
There was a lot. I had a couple of the random, the credit cards. And one of them that stuck out was send to home spending money for Snack in a Pack at Frank's Big Little, $600 and some dollars. Is there, it's a practice where
Something we have, it used to be a different title for an ankle is.
We have blessings in the backpack.
Yes.
It's called Snack in the Pack.
Yeah, so we get donations.
And that's all supported by donations, right?
That's all, yeah, donations. Several churches are there originally, and then others have kind of taken that over, so.
I know a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the last one was Emily, Emily Blins, Orlic Athletic Club, $500.
I believe that was for a student program, but always here.
Yep, absolutely. So we have, we had a couple of students who earned their PE credit through a partnership with Flack because they weren't able to be at the high school. So we were kind of putting their programming together through the combination of SOFOs, some work experience, and then they were able to get a PE credit by going to Flack during the week every day.
Yeah, join them at some point.
Sometimes meet supervisor.
And then the last one was Chris Trydyer, the Career Development Symposium. It's a small dollar amount, but I was just curious what Career Development Symposium was and center for what it became.
Ethic development. Chris, did you hear the question?
Yeah, what was the dollar amount on that? I'm trying to remember.
It's not on, $10, sorry, $10.35 and $45. I was just curious what.
Yeah, there's the was it two, did you say two, the 10 and 45? I'm trying to
$10.35 and then $40.
Yeah, there, one of those is for WACDA, Precision Plus are hosting an event with Gateway in Delvin, and the $45 would have been the Wisconsin Manufacturing Commerce Event. To professional development, networking opportunities.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was that was it for me. That's for there, wasn't it?
Other questions?
Bill, do you know how, how many kids went on the baseball?
Oh, to the
Yeah, to South Carolina, yeah. How many, or like, how many total, including coaches, and like, how many ride on the bus?
I saw when they arrived back here Sunday, and there are a lot of them on that big coach bus.
Is it more than 30?
Yes, probably close to that. I'd be guessing, that's for sure.
Okay.
Other questions?
I'm moved to approve the general other fund bills, April 24, 2023, check numbers 149105, 149192, wire numbers 904 to 914, and ACH numbers 661 to 674, they combined them out 271,549.92 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
And move the second to approve the general other fund bills, April 24, 2023, checks number 149105, 149192, wire numbers 904914, ACH numbers 661 to 674, combined amount 271,549.92 as presented.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mr. Gatten.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Colton.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Now we're in student report.
Oh, no.
It's a lot of you that we At Westside, I was through this class, had an ice cream party, because they got 55, which are like excellent pies. So they had an ice cream party, and PLPW, they were finishing up one of their units, and they made beehives. And then on Thursday, all the elementary schools took a field trip to the high school to come watch books before they, it was like their rehearsal.
Yep.
And they did cut out all the swear words and made it appropriate. There was lots of swearing. And then at Tibbetts, they had a twin day with military pictures are what added readers should, how they should act, and then an example of an avid leader. And then the third grade took a field trip to Timber Ridge Water Park. At Jackson, our child development, two classes in the high school, went over and read to kindergarten and first graders as one of their units. They did bread making and science class, I believe. And then their bio and get one free book fairs all set up.
Do you want to share?
Oh, yeah. Um, so I think it was all the elementary schools, and then options also participated in it. It's their creativity contest, so they did a full presentation, and then they got to like present it, and it was like a convention, it looked really fun.
Hey, the turnout was so great, we may have to look for a different location.
At the middle school, their book fairs all set up, and I believe it started today. Adia Credit Union went into one of the business classes to talk about like what they do and like positions at Adia. And then in their self case, like ed class, they're doing vinyl cutouts, so they're using like crickets and silhouette machines. At the high school, our forensic state, the, our freshman Ramsey took bronze, and then sophomore Gillian took gold at state. Gabby, Gabby Dixon and Kaylee Frank both got Southern Lakes Conference Awards for gymnastics. And then our FFA environmental club adventure on, won the state, so next year in the fall, they're that, they're invited to the international contest. We also had the top 10 record, and the food was really good.
I've missed it, I'm so angry. Same time, I put in a school board orientation. It's always really good. Was it the grading with the stinky trunks and?
Yeah, I just stuck with the negatives. And then, sorry, Mr. Tyler, one of the, I'm in a school.
Oh, you want me to go back?
Yeah. Megan, um, Steve, I hope I said that right. She partners with Badger, and Badger is on their ski team, and she went to state, so she got her medal at the state.
I did want to mention, you shared the elementary is going over for the musical. I had the chance for the musical Saturday night, and I've never been in there when there was, all the seats were filled on Saturday, and when I drove by Sunday, I can only imagine the Sunday matinee was a really bad
It will.
To be discouraged or all of them, so it's really well attended.
At Options, they are doing a win and SST, which are kind of like career exploration. I know it's at the high school, but when they emailed us, they were very adamant that this was going to be in it, so I think they're just trying to get it into options. Um, again, it's the elementary creativity conference up in the corner. And then they took a field trip to the library and learned all about dinosaurs. And then CCA, we had a few middle schoolers take the Accuplacer test, um, which is Gateway's test when you apply to college. And what this will do for middle schoolers is it will help them earn an associate's degree by the time they're out of high school. CCA celebrated Earth Day with Gateway. They had a little booth set up and scavenger hunt at Gateway's festival. And then some of our high schoolers are instructing a plumbing simulator, so in the future they will be able to wire and pump a toilet, so from a construction standpoint, it'll be usable. Um, I don't know if I would have to use it. But it helps them be able to develop how to do that in practice, so.
Second report.
All right, I brought a whole team, so how would you say that? I'm Agent Pastor, I am the National Health Navigator. I'm a social worker over at the Current Health Academy in SOFOs, and I'm going to help.
One section of the view is put the camera. We've got to chat because we've got two cameras so we can make sure you guys don't speak.
There we go. Twenty players, images. Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Megan Pastor, a mental health navigator. I'm near me, and I go to the Walworth County Health and Human Services, and then I'm based on the Currentology Academy in SoCal.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kendra Kennedy. I'm actually a new mental health navigator, also jointly employed by HHS. Um, and you'll learn a little bit more about my position through this presentation.
Right. And I'm Emily Lynn, Director of Special Education. So, um, last year, uh, just for a quick review, we had some new people on the board, but last spring we were here, and we talked a little bit about our work that we did last year, um, which we had kind of pulled together a team and had looked at, um, just basically a need assessment in our building, like our overall framework, um, for providing mental health services to the students who need them, and looking at tier two and tier three, kind of like a resource audit, like what, what do we need? Where are our gaps? What might we need to get additional PD on in relation to providing those interventions and that sort of thing? And then we worked really hard last year on establishing kind of referral pathways because our ultimate goal is to expand partnerships. I think, um, Elkhorn has had a longstanding partnership with Creedence, but we were really looking at expanding that to include other agencies and provide kind of more choice to families and more, um, just more services because the need was so great. So last year we worked really hard on developing like a protocol and a process for that. Um, and so today we want to give the board an update on kind of how that went this year and how it worked, and the number of students we were able to serve. Um, but just as a quick review too, like you might be thinking, why school-based mental health? Um, it does remove barriers such as transportation. So if families sometimes, you know, really want their child to receive therapy, they know it's needed, but they're like, well, I work full-time, I can't get them to appointments. Um, it does remove barriers such as transportation scheduling for families. It reduces time out of the building for students if they can, you know, scoot down there during a 30-minute, you know, period, a study hall or something during the day. Um, that's much different than if their parents have to pick them up from school, take them to the appointment, bring them back where they might be out for two, three hours. Um, it provides a natural setting for students and families. So when you're thinking about that initial rapport building stage for students when they start therapy, it's a more comfortable environment. They're at school. They know they're, they're comfortable there. Um, going into a therapist's office can sometimes be intimidating for students and children. So school just kind of, again, breaks down that barrier. It also allows easy access to licensed therapists. Um, so sometimes when you call agencies, they might be like, yeah, sure, we'll get you in in a year or a six-month waiting list. Um, this provides a much quicker path for families to get connected to therapists. Above all else, responding to a child's mental health needs and emotional, emotional wellbeing directly correlates to their ability to function in school. So we're really excited about being able to expand those partnerships. Um, all of it is handled the same way from a payment perspective. Um, it goes through family's insurance and is billed. So essentially, it's like these agencies have a little satellite, you know, office in our building. So where we help them is with the coordination of space in our building, scheduling, to ensure kids aren't, you know, missing important tests or classes, but then they handle it as far as communication with, with families, billing insurance and all of that. So I just want you guys all to have that background and kind of base information. So, oh, one more thing. So if you look at kind of our goals for this year, um, we're going to go through these in our slides coming forward, but we really wanted to expand those partnerships. We wanted to outline small group interventions that could be available at each building because last year we identified a huge need, um, for students expressing, you know, that need for talking to someone about being anxious and stressed out at school. So we really wanted to be able to do small groups. And then we also did a time study this year for all of our student services staff, our counselors, social workers, psychs, to really look at where are we spending our time, how can we align those roles and responsibilities to complement each other and really work together to meet our goals. Um, and then we are continuing to explore ways to engage families and community through this work as well. Nice discussion, right?
Yes, Emily was saying too, so we, I feel like completed our goal of partnering with multiple agencies other than Creedence, so adding more agencies on. Um, and then the top left corner, as it's highlighted, I just want to really take note to the amount of students served last year compared to this year. And we understood it was an overwhelming need. So to have this opportunity to expand these partnerships, um, we added Child and Family Therapeutic System, Dateline Mental Health Services, uh, Professional Services Group, and C A Counseling, um, this year. So right now, we're serving a total of, rather district, 219, um, students. So not only does this expansion allow for more students to be able to access toll-based mental health services, um, it also allows choice for students and families as well based on specific need and insurance. And, you know, we want to be able to offer more than just one agency so that families are able to look for it too and see what can best fit their needs. Um, another cool thing about this too is, I mean, Dateline Mental Health is based out of loyalty. So students who need this service, they, they're accessing it even through the summer, we're providing space for them so that these students can continue their, the service throughout, um, the summer into the next school year. Um, another cool thing too is that 32 of these students, we've been able to help receive services through the SAP fundings, the School Assistance Program funding that Emily will talk about a little later as well. Um, but as you can see, there's still a waitlist, even with, um, all the partnerships we do have. So this still is such an overwhelming need within our community, within your county, within our district.
How many did we have on the waitlist last year that we've been able to move off?
Um, I can get very funny, but I don't pass that off the top of my head. But we can provide that absolutely.
I think last year what we noticed is we hit a waitlist before Christmas. Okay. So that's why we were like, really like, we need more, more partners here. Um, and just the compliment, comment as I once said, the student assistance program is still for students who have no insurance, like no Medicaid, no state aid, they don't have anything. Um, we have, we have that ability to help them to obtain a few sections through, through an agency just to kind of get that treatment started. And then we try to say, we, we collaborate with the agency and say, okay, when are we ready to kind of transition this work back to our school providers? Um, but it allows us to never deny someone that need their mental health crisis.
I, I can, um, confirm as a, as a parent, and I had a young lady that, you know, we, we had the pleasure of having lived with us through high school, and I think one of the most humbling experiences I had was checking her into Rogers and sitting there with her mom and going through, you know, the, her mental health was so bad during that middle school timeframe that she had six attempts during their life. And looking back and, and now the young lady, she's being successful, she made it through high school, graduated a year early actually, and is holding down a job. But I, I wish that we had had then some of those services, that ability to get in. Because even when she was in the mental health crisis, there's nothing more frustrating than hearing, well, yeah, we can get you into somebody in two months or into a psychiatrist in several months. And so this need is, this work is so phenomenal. Creedence has been an incredible partner. They still are. And that's why I just want to, they just didn't have the capacity to continue as well. And also with different insurances and so forth, this expansion has been.
And Creedence still has the most providers working with us. Like, if you look at, I don't know how many do they have, five or six people? So, I mean, Creedence has still had a waitlist all year. I mean, this, this just helped us meet the overwhelming need that we have. All right. So then that brings us kind of to this next piece that was a goal for us, um, was to build the mental health literacy for everyone that works in schools. Um, if we have this many students being referred out, we also just want to, as a district, know how to be supportive to students who are experiencing, again, you know, different challenges, different behavioral challenges, um, maybe have a history of, of trauma affecting them. So we did use some of our Get Kids Ahead funding, which, um, if you take us back to that Esther Roadshow from last year, Bill, one of the highest needs identified in that, when you work with different groups, was mental health, behavior, like how, that was one of the highest needs that came out of that survey from all the groups that Melanie met with. Um, so we had used part of that Get Kids Ahead funding, um, to really partner with Professional Services Group to provide district-wide professional development to all staff that work in our buildings on kind of the neurobiology and impact of trauma on the brain. Um, how to kind of manage and support behavior that challenges us as adults in ways that supports students who are going through these crises and through these struggles, and then also kind of that collaborative problem-solving approach. I think the biggest takeaway from this, from my perspective, has been it's given us common language. So, you know, talking about identifying, you know, when, when a, when a child's lid is flipped, and we talk about, you know, like, if this is your amygdala and this is your prefrontal cortex, if that's, if that's offline, you're not accessing thinking, you're not being rational, you're not able to problem solve. So talking to someone when their lid is flipped is productive. So it's kind of given us that, that common language. It's given us the common language of co-regulation, and how do we, how do we just be present with the child who's struggling and just breathe and just regulate with them? How do we teach them by modeling that in the moment? Um, and then it's also just given us this, this idea of, let's get curious about behavior rather than getting frustrated, you know, like sometimes happens. Like, how can we just get curious? What's going on? What do we know about what's happening? How can we, how can we problem solve together? How can we put solutions in place? So this has been, I feel it's been well-received by, by district staff who just wants to know, how, how do I help? How do I meet this need? Um, and so that's been really, really positive. And I think, you know, it's how we want to continue that work is really targeting in on groups that are more on some of the front lines of students when they're experiencing this. So looking at kind of next steps theme with our student services staff, special education, paraprofessional, continuing to provide that PD in that area. Um, another component related to this that we wanted to do this year that was very successful was the middle and high school, that a need assessment was students and families, just again, looking at what are the needs and how can we address them? Um, and I would say it was impressive how many students were able to access interventions based on those surveys. Um, I think, I don't think anybody expected 144 students to self-identify as, hey, I would like to talk to someone and have a small group intervention on helping me deal with stress or different things happening in my life, my self-esteem, whatever it may be. Um, so this is the data related to that. Um, that need assessment survey there is, is linked if anybody wants to look at that on their, on their own time. But that was, I think, successful in the sense that a lot of work went into that, doing the survey, looking at the data, forming the groups, providing the groups, collecting data to see if the groups were effective. Like, so huge kudos to those student services team who, who did that.
All right. Kendra? Yeah. So I'm up. Um, so I'm Kendra Kennedy. I'm the new mental health navigator. Um, my position was, uh, I guess born out of part of these goals. Um, so what happened was, uh, Emily applied for a grant, the school applied for a grant, uh, with Walworth County to address truancy and youth justice needs in our schools. Um, so the, the target of this grant is kids that are at risk for habitual truancy, so they're not making it to school. Um, they're either, they might have some behavioral issues that are kind of coming out. Um, and as a mental health person, I'm a licensed therapist, um, we all know that a lot of it boils down to mental health, which is why included and was presented. Um, uh, the other piece as well is I am part of that answer to strengthen H E D partnerships. So since I have co-employed with Walworth County HHS, where I'm working with these families, it's almost like a, a very easy pipeline to get these families into services. They might need CCS services. They might need, um, health getting insurance or some basic needs pieces. Um, so that's a little bit of, of the piece that I will be working on.
Yeah, and I would just like to say, like, Lisa, Lisa Brolle, actually from the county, and Renee did a lot of work on that grant. We had connected regarding kind of the needs and just were kind of brainstorming, hey, how do we, how do we get more mags? How do we get more, more help? How do we get more collaboration in this area? And actually, Lisa came across this grant and kind of brought it up and said, we thought that partner on this. So huge, hugely grateful to Walworth County, Lisa Brolle, for, for working with us on that. And because it is a two-year grant, which is very exciting. So we know we can, we can really get a lot of good system level work and things done in that time.
What was the dollar amount for the grant?
$150,000 for the first year, and then up to 75% of that grant up to the site here.
Excited about that? So another piece of mental health is mental health awareness and stigma reduction. Um, so just a couple of like small pieces that we're kind of working on is me as a mental health awareness month. So, um, unfortunately, uh, Senza was not able to be here with us today. She was going to speak a little bit about some of the pieces that she's doing just within the community, um, and, and obviously in relation to the school. Um, within the district, we have at both the elementary or elementary, middle and high school, um, we're doing activities just to reduce stigma around mental health. Um, so it's like simple things like wearing green, you know, just, you know, everybody, getting everybody involved. It's, we're teaching kids about reducing stigma, mindfulness, we're hosting wellness walk, um, increasing social connections and focus on gratitude. So just like little things to increase that awareness, um, and increasing those conversations around mental health. Um, another piece is Elkhorn's Half-Stance Up Stigma that actually starts tomorrow and Wednesday. So this is a new initiative. We're kind of starting this work group. We've noticed that, I think in our community, we've noticed that there's an increase in mental health needs. Um, so what can we do as a school to sort of address, um, some of that stigma piece that sort of comes out and acts sometimes, I guess, as a barrier or can be in the way? So we are starting these work groups within the, within the district, and then at some point, we hope to kind of move it out to the community as well. Um, and we'll be just keep probably solving some of those pieces.
All right. So looking at kind of next steps for us as we move into, hard to believe, but we're thinking about planning for next year. Um, again, just looking at expanding in-house interventions, and what we mean by that is continue to build the capacity and, um, resources and ability of our, of our in-district counselors, schools, like social workers to kind of have, um, a toolbox of, of things that they can provide as well, um, for those students who maybe don't need to be referred up to an agency, but, you know, parents or children have identified a need for more services. So we're really working on that. Um, we are applying for the mental health grant through the state, which is a competitive grant. Um, and that is really focusing on prevention and intervention efforts as well. Um, so more to come on that. And then continuing to strengthen and expand our community-based partnerships because I think that's where we have really seen the greatest, um, the outcomes of when we're working together with, with agencies and looking at how to provide those wraparound services and needs for students and families.
I want to, there's one component that I'd like you to speak to Emily that I, I think is one of the most exciting pieces that I heard, having gone through this as with that parent hat, getting a kid into a psychiatrist. And Walworth County was at least a four-month wait. Um, when I spoke to the people at the Rogers, they said only four months because Milwaukee area is sick. And so why do you speak to that partnership that you, because that's huge.
I forgot. So this year too, we were able to, um, to access psychiatry, telepsychiatry through the Professional Services Group. And I could give multiple examples right now of families who have, have come to meetings saying like, we are in a crisis right now. We need medication management. We need help. My child's on meds, it's not working, or, you know, whatever. And they're calling their psychiatrist, and they're like, yeah, we'll see you in June or July. And it's like, no, like, we need help now. So with this telepsychiatry partnership with PSG, um, they've been consistently getting kids in within a week or two weeks next. I just reached out today, actually, about a, a family who was looking for help, and she said, we'll wait even by the end of the week. So that's been huge. Um, the other cool thing about that partnership is that all the families to date have asked us So that's been huge. Um, the other cool thing about that partnership is that all the families to date have asked us to be a part of those meetings. So we're all sitting there with the psychiatrists on the computer. The school is talking about what's happening at school, the family is talking about that. And it's led to some really successful medication management plans. Um, so that's, that's been, that's been huge. I forgot to mention that.
Any other question? Uh, first of all, I worked with Stinkline for a couple of, uh, years now. I didn't expect that. I love Stinkline and, uh, they're. Uh, the director over there, I I worked with her personally. She's very, very good. Um, and so I'm glad to hear the work of this partnership. Um, I. There were, I had two questions, Jake, which I have one of them, most of the psychiatry. I know that having kids that that have gone through foster care is often there. There's a lot of issues to be able to get them medication when they need it. And I, you said six months, we had eight monthly, for one of our colleagues. Um, or they weren't taking it out at all. Because there's just so few child. Medication, uh, medication individuals. Real pain. So I mean, I appreciate you guys going through and finding that access to it. Um, let me say, uh, so the other, the last question I have that that wasn't already answered was. Um, I know you guys work with with families with all of this stuff. Um, are there any any times where you guys are not going to the families and keeping them involved in the, uh, um. With 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 what's going on as well?
That's a great question. So always at the beginning at the point of referral, there's a consent form that parents would be able to sign. In regards to, do you want the school communicating with the therapist? Like, do you want them in the loop? As long as parents sign that, then we we stay in the loop and we stay in communication. There have been times parents don't want to sign that and that's okay, like, you know, and then we just kind of coordinate the space and the. And the, um, like the schedule, but we don't talk to the therapist because the parents didn't sign that release. Because we still have to treat it. Like we would if it was an outside doctor provider. So there has to be that signed release that yes, we are, we are giving permission for the school to be informed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
But that was the same if a child came to and didn't, they're accountable. Like, has that?
Great question, great question. So, um, if if the child is under the age of eighteen and this is something that fills through. The family insurance, we would, we would probably work with the the child and the student to say, how can we help you talk to your family about this? Uh, would you like us to be there with you? How could we approach it? Right? So like, so we would really try to help support the student. And encourage them to talk to their family, because that would have to be consented for, um, if they're a minor.
Is there any services? So in that circumstance. So if the child feels unsafe or is on a, like, feel like they're really able to communicate with their family. Just the services, I mean, I know that you guys can do everything in your power to be able to help the student, but. But, I mean, practically, the service is basically just kind of like, because the family doesn't know about it or the family doesn't sign off on it, it's just kind of. Stop?
If the child was in crisis, like, anybody at the school thought they were unsafe, then it would kind of fall into that needed reporter. Kind of side of our job where we would likely be getting the county involved and determining. You know, from there, what direction things need to go to get the child access to services. But really to get psychiatric treatment or therapy. Gotta have the parents involved. Yeah, yeah.
I think Abigail, from the student's perspective, um. Because I I know I had a discussion recently and I don't even recall who I was speaking to, but when. Um. Hope squad have their meeting after casting them. Devin, I think one of the. Primary concerns that Hope Squad relayed was a concern of, you know, students expressing. Concern of parents not taking this serious or. Allowing them to. Access mental health. Is that accurate from the student perspective or from what? Students are sharing these concerns or is that?
Yeah, I think we also, yeah, I think. Uh, so like. Sometimes I feel like we just feel like as like our older generation, like we all take mental health as seriously and like. I think it's hard for us to to then like go to our parents and like be like, hey, I'm struggling. So they all see it the way we see it. Something that's definitely something that I've heard in school.
So I think if I, Abigail, like Ben, I think part of the reason too why we, because I think that's a common thing we hear often. And so part of the mental health literacy for all staff too is like, how can we embed? You know, some of this, how do you manage stress? How do you manage anxiety? All of us experience it at some point in our life. So. Trying to embed some of that, um, and have it available. Because it, when you're looking at referring to outside agencies for again, therapy or those sorts of things, you. Think we're kind of bound by like the therapy too would say, we we, you know, have to have consent to treat. So that's where it's a little bit, um, where I think working with the student. To help them approach their family and work through that, I think would probably be the number one goal. Um, but if that makes sense, I think some of the more universal pieces. I think that's why sometimes as educators we feel like that's important, just because. We do know that there's quite a few students in that situation and we want to be able to kind of help them support them. Thanks for sharing that.
Hey Emily, um, for the survey that you guys ended up sending out, um, I know there have been, uh, surveys in the past where they're very anonymous. Uh, where where allows the students to be able to kind of be anonymous when they're filling out the survey. Um, and. I'm just curious, with this survey, was it anonymous and so we were able to, so I see you can go ahead. No. Does that mean we were, when they were, when they were said, hey, we need help, like this specific individual said they needed help? We were able to identify who that person was quickly.
Yep, and that's where they got, the middle school had a hundred and forty-four kids who were. An intervention as a result of that survey, which I think is incredible and a huge kudos to that team because. They did a ton of work to get those groups up and rolling. They brought in outside providers to help them run the groups. Um, and it was very well done. So. Yes, it was not anonymous. Um, the point of it was to identify students and it's and the parents too. Have the option to fill out a survey if they wanted their their students.
Really tough job.
Oh, thank you.
First reading of, uh, proposed modifications.
All right, each year we review the staff employee handbooks in blue. And are being stricken are the proposed modifications. This is the first. Reading, so we'll go through each of these and, um, feel feel free to chime in and clarify if I. Misspeak on it. Um, the first one is just really a combination. This would go into both support staff and. Um, professional staff handbooks. We have two different. Um. Handbooks there. This is boilerplate. Uh, language re, uh, related to legal accommodations and so forth, legal opportunity. Uh, you'll see payroll dates, um, modifying this change. Or making it reflected in the handbook, um, for professional staff, they're. Uh, not paid year round, they're from the federal law changed several years ago where. I believe it was unless the employee consents, you have to pay the employee within forty-five days, I believe, of the completion of the work. So with that, um, it. Uh, how many pay leaves are there? Twenty?
Yeah, this came to the board last year. We added the August date. Uh, but the second paragraph, which is five point two, we didn't change that.
Just, I mean, this was already in place this last year. We're just updating.
So, yeah, so that way teachers and so forth, when they come on board, they receive their first paycheck on August thirty-first instead of waiting till. September fifteenth. It's one less paycheck than they were receiving or, no, it's one more. So their pay is distributed a little bit more. So they have twenty-one. And you'll see, um, and then this is just a change to know later than May thirty-first for the. Um, when they get compensated, non-athletic. Um. Clubs, supervisions, oftentimes will go for the entire year. So this just defines. That we're going to end that on May thirty-first and make sure they're paid before that. Um, working workers comp number, uh, change as well as a little bit of the process. They used to have to call the number and then fill out a form. The company we use, they document everything so we don't leave them to go and. Fill out another form that gets completed and then they call.
We're part of a consortium of school districts that do property, cash and insurance, we've been out. Uh, risk management organization and Acuity has been our workers comp carrier for. Probably almost twenty years. Um, they provide a nice dividend program and a nice referral, um. But we were able to negotiate this med court component, which is when an individual employee is injured. They can call and talk to a nurse immediately and get recommendations on how to deal with the injury. A perfect case would be a second shift custodian. And they're in the building alone. What do I do? And as a supervisor administrator, typically, most of us don't have much medical experience. You gotta go into the, you know, doctor, you gotta go to this. So they get that as a first, uh, response and then all of that information gets automatically. Reported to Acuity. So kind of.
Uh, the next section, no change to crisis leave, we're just retitling it to other paid leave. And we'd like to propose for, we have a number of, in fact, it may make up some of the largest percentages of. Plus your parents, safe family volunteers who post, um, children, um, also happen to be employees or. Uh, teachers within the school district. And one of the biggest challenges that they have is getting that time away when they need to go to court dates. In order to take them to medical. And so we'd like to propose supporting those individuals and doing that work, which is often with our own students. By allowing them that flexibility, um, to take that time, which typically isn't a lot of time, but it just. You know, they have two, um, personal days and that's what falls into the category of. Going to court or something. That's putting an additional strain on. So we'd like to. Grant, um, those leaves and those cases. And then we did, I believe, the the bone marrow organ donor leave, um, that's portalizing that into the. Handbook as well. Again, that's something that comes up very often, um, but I know that we have had. Uh, you know, a liver donor and I'm sure we've had other donors, but that's the most recent one that I know of, um. Lately, so that's providing a leave provision in order to facilitate them on donating.
Just need one of us question. Um, I mean, um, I know when I was working for the, uh, the federal government, they had a, uh, like. Leave donation thing. So if you're, if you're an employee who had. An abundance of leave, right? And you were just maybe you just weren't going to use it or you just happen to be a good person. Um, you could donate your leave to the employees that have recognized the medical issues. Do you have something like that?
So we have our crisis leave, which that had come up as. So if you look at the handbook in this twelve point one, twelve point three, the board over the years have had. Several requests, I'd say a handful of requests coming from time to time that, you know, I've got these days I'd like to donate to the employee. And it always is create kind of a. Sticky wicket in that, well, how do you cover the employees who might not. Have as many friends or that they're more private about what their need is and so forth. And so the board. Adopted this crisis leave where if someone's exhausted all their leave, they have a medical crisis or something else like that. That, um, Taylor, you know, not to violate the privacy, and she'll bring it to Bill and myself and we can sign off on. That need for extending crisis leave.
Gotcha.
Because we don't, we have had employees who. Had a dying spouse and and spent the last few days because they're worried about finances. At at work as opposed to that. So the crisis leave provides that that grace.
Okay, so that's that's the basic.
Yeah, so it does, it makes a kind of a moot point. We don't need the donation.
Thank you.
Uh, professional reimbursement. Uh, this was adding language into when we ask people to go and get a certification or we need you to go into this and you can. Do your job. We do cover the tuition or the the cost for going and completing that. But we didn't have specific language in there requiring that grade what we did in the regular reimbursement program. So, uh, we did add that language there. As well. Um. These are pay differentials related to the, um. Market that we're seeing out there as well as the, uh. Demand. So there's some adjustments to what that compensation level is and they just have to be reflected in the handbooks. Uh, Bill, anything you want to add to that?
The adjustments range between like fifty cents, seventy-five cents an hour for these specific positions, which generally are custodian grounds. That we can position.
We have a hard time. Getting people to want to do those, doing what the P differentials that are there. Full-time and so many, let's see.
Like, all all that is doing is, is, I think you said to say custodian longevity and it was only for full-time custodians and that's grandfather. I think there's only three staff members that are qualified for that anymore. Maybe grandfather, you know, that department years ago.
So I'd like to recognize staff, um, who have that bilingual skill that, um. Benefits them in their position or it's a benefit to ourselves with a pay differential. Um, we're finding they're very highly sought after and for in order for that to be competitive. Would like to add that A differential there, very similar to having a different skill or certification that may warrant that. Additional compensation.
Do we have a definition of a regular basis would be on any of that? I think I think we talked about that.
We did.
Uh, yeah, okay, so, um, is it, I don't remember, was it, was there a definition for that?
We did not define it further than adding the regular basis.
Okay.
In other words, if somebody speaks German and fluently and English, but. They're never asked to. Interpret for German or maybe it's once out of a couple of years, they're not going to get a pay differential just because.
Right.
We used, we used it one time.
Right.
But it's, it's probably more along the lines of Spanish.
Spanish teachers are, I see that we have a ESL teacher as well, so along those lines. Okay.
It's, I, we do have students and, you know, with, uh, Chinese.
Or Italian.
Italian, we've had much too.
Okay.
Um. So, I mean, there's certainly between the first and second reading if we wanted to add some more language to. Clearly define regular basis, but, um. You know, we could certainly do that. I I think that gives the specificity enough that we could, you know, say, well. You know, once a month or a couple of times a week probably isn't a regular.
Sure.
Special education teaching assistant, pay differential, um, that position again, as compared to the market and that is our position. It has the highest. Turnover and influx, even though the compensation level is higher than the regular education staff are proposing a differential there as well. Um. Supplemental pay, it's adding in the language for the crossing guard duty. Um, previously, the police department, we contracted with them and they would. Hire the the crossing guards, would always would get billed back for that, but, um, they're having a difficulty with. We, we have a very large network with our, you know, email and our social media and all of that. So. Uh, we assume those duties, uh, uh, direct contracting and hiring the crossing guards. So. Uh, and sometimes our teachers, um, fulfill those duties as well.
So we're still staying contracted with the, like, county, I think it's, it's Mason City, uh, so like down here in, uh.
Yeah, so that's like their traffic control and so forth. So we'll get.
High school.
And that's what, that's what Bill was for today, right?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So then the crossing guard though are. You know, posted at, uh, West Side, we have one here at Jackson, the middle school. And I believe the, I mean, the teachers at the middle school, and I don't. Jackson, I believe it's, uh, not a staff, not a teacher.
Adult. Adult.
We have both.
Thinking it was in January last week.
Right.
Um. Extra duty, um, updated stipends listed below. Uh, we try to base all the stipends as equitably as possible, meaning basing it off of projected, you know, hours and then hourly rate and how often do they meet? And that's why you will see variation. It's not because we don't value a certain position more, it's because certain positions, if they're all year long and they meet on a regular basis, then like the auto field advisor, then that annual stipend is five thousand dollars. We did a number of years ago, we went through and adjusted all those based on those hours and asked people to put the numbers together. When it's a new position or a new club, they put together a budget as part of that proposal and they have to list out, here's, you know, what we're seeing for the number of days. And if it's something that's a little more, okay, we're not quite certain how often it's going to meet, then we'll do as a hourly supplemental day until we've established that, you know, how much time that takes. You'll see like this one right here, FCC LA assistant that's listed as an hourly, just so that we make sure the stipends are wanted so they want to work.
So, uh, we would revisit that in the future, but I mean, would that be like next year type of thing?
Or, yeah, could the, or if it's more sporadic and only for handful of events or going to like conferences, then we'll leave it at that.
Keep it at that. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, this is an adjustment. I love our weight room supervisors. I mean, that may be an area that we need to look at considering down the road. You'll see the, the ones where they're stricken is we just don't have, uh, those positions or those clubs anymore. We have been traditionally adding a lot more than what we have, but sometimes either the advisor goes away, is no longer able to do it, or just the interest has leaned and gone in a different direction. Uh, powerlifting and in front of our newer programs, there are close to a hundred students in that program and doing great as well. So lots of opportunities.
Yeah.
But that's. We had a national champion. She won nationals and she broke the American record for.
Yep.
Three, yeah. So American record holder.
Sure. And how old is our powerlifting? Is it?
It's brand new.
It's brand new, right? Like.
I would say this was the second year formalized, but probably third year overall. Chad Stoltz brought that in a few years ago. And, uh, yeah, it's, uh, they've quickly grown. It's become very popular. The kids can do it while doing the other sports and stuff. Some kids really just focus on that and, you know, it's neat to see that success. All right. Any other questions?
Well, it's just a first rate, so we'll see. Yeah. Come up with it. All right, personnel.
Yeah. The personnel sheet is attached. Um. I wanted to, um, Joanne Tella for her years of service, she'd retired, came out of retirement. I did point out to her that she's passed the March thirty first deadline for retirement. And she laughed at me when I told her that she wasn't able to retire. Jill Bestel, we want to thank her for her years of service, um, as an occupational therapist. She has offered, that's an area where there is a shortage in staffing and we may be able to continue to work with Jill in the future in a, um, limited role or a different role. We want to thank her for all of her years of service as well. Uh, Rebecca Saldner is a, a special education teacher at West Side. Um, Mark McGowan, um, who's been an excellent math teacher and, um, moving closer to, uh, wants to go to Chicago. Yeah. So, um.
Yeah.
Yes. So we're, we're really sad to see Mark go. He, he's an excellent math teacher, um, but excited for him and that new opportunity. Um, resignation of Carrie Todd, our sign language interpreter. I know she's looking to, you have a copy of all their letters under the board notes there, but want to thank her for her service. I know that, um, I think the student that she's working with, it's not, I just fade them, have them need next year. Uh, Kylie Cosby, who served as the West Side Special Education Teaching Assistant. And Elizabeth, uh, Zajab is a, um, teaching assistant out at Tibbets. Uh, we have some transfers. Nancy Atkinson is to middle school cook position. Uh, resignation of Courtney as middle school girls basketball coach. Cynthia Borgan is a middle school gymnastics assistant coach. And Susan Scala is a middle school gymnastics assistant coach. Mary Bass is a high school girls swim assistant coach. Sierra Spilling has been appointed as the high school girls volleyball head coach. And, uh, Sierra is also an elementary teacher here at, um, Jackson. And then Ann Manelli is a middle school, has been appointed as middle school girls basketball assistant.
Excellent. Questions? I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, including no permanent contracts, conditioned upon passing a background check and district mandated drug screening as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved to second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, including no permanent contracts, condition passing a background check and district mandated drug screening.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mr. Gavin.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yeah.
Mr. Scaram.
Yes.
Ms. Colton.
Yes.
And this waves his excuse. Then I don't have any school guests present this evening. Hey, uh, as discussed at the budget retreat, um, would like to establish a ad hoc advisory, uh, committee for the school board. This is a formal process so much the board authorizes, um, let's do, establish a committee of stakeholders that, as we have done in the past and prior referendum, look at the issue. And the board can do this on whatever concern they want or issue or anything that they have. And then have that committee tasked with bringing back recommendations for the whole school, school board to consider. So the purpose of this committee, you can see the purpose statement. The purpose of the financial stability ad hoc advisory committee is to examine the school district financial budget needs over the next multi-year budget cycle for the purpose of developing strategic financial stability recommendations for consideration by the Elkhorn, uh, school board. Would propose that it has, as a minimum, uh, two school board members, um, administration representative, teacher representative, support staff representatives, parent representatives and community representation. And in the past, when we did those committees, I didn't have to turn anybody away. I don't know if, you know, what the, um, interest would be. Generally we do a large broadcast out to the community. And, um, what I've done in the past is when I get the feedback back, like last time I didn't feel like I had, um, a lot of female representation from parents. So would re, reach out and try to get kind of a, a good cross section of the, the community so that, you know, every group is represented as best as possible. I can't then guarantee attendance ongoing. That's something we'd like to commit, but we don't ask for a whole lot of meetings. Typically, last time when we did this, we met two times a month and it took three to four months. I believe that you may have been on that committee, correct?
Yep.
Originally, um, and that was a number of years ago. It, it worked quite well and then the committee brings back to the board that recommendation. Here I should have just scrolled down a little bit. I apologize. This is a timetable we're looking at with recommendations presented to the school board, no later than November thirteenth of twenty twenty three. And you can see there's a policy book instead. Any questions related to that?
I've got a couple of things. Um, uh, number one, so, uh, support staff, uh, representation, uh, we've got one and two on there, uh, for, for that way there. What is all included in the support staff representation? Like what, what people have in the, in the school district?
Yeah. So that would be all custodians, cooks, secretaries, any non-professional staff, uh, teacher aides, teacher assistants. So when you look at the ratios are from a staffing, um.
Is it paraprofessionals on that as well?
Paraprofessionals.
Yeah.
Hourly employees.
Oh, okay. So paraprof, so paraprofessionals, okay. So I just said paraprofessionals and then you're saying are, are those our professionals?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. Got it. Okay. Um, so then I had a, I mean, are we allowed to make recommendations on this or, or no? Like, I mean, I, I have a couple of things I, like, our paraprofessional staff is massive. Well, we have a, we have a large number of people here who, who are paraprofessionals. And one to two, um, only seems kind of small.
Yeah. I, I was saying that, I, I was looking at these as minimums.
Okay. So do we have?
I'd like to make sure that we have at least one to two on.
Okay. So then, then these are, hey, we're going to go out and try to find at least those minimum ones. So, okay. So if we don't have somebody from the paraprof, or the, the, uh, support staff that steps up, we go through that and be like, hey, we really want somebody on this. Can you bring him on here? Yeah. Gotcha. Okay. Are there, are, I'm sure that you said that you, you know, you've never actually had to turn anybody away, but are you, I mean, what happens if, I don't know, fifty people show up? Are, are you?
Then, then I guess what I would propose is taking that ad hoc committee and then dividing in a representation standpoint. There's a lot of tasks to do and look at studies. So perhaps groups divide and take on a different component of the, that budgetary discussion. We get out, you know, within that committee, subcommittees really, that they were going to focus on this topic, we're going to focus on this.
So is there?
Because it's not very productive to have a meeting.
Of course not. Yeah. It's massive. That's what you might ask the question of. Um, so is there some other things that they may have to do?
I mean, if, if the board wanted to put a specific limit though, then I, I would recommend that we would, you know, basically go to a lottery basis. I don't ever like a first come, first served, um, basis. I, I think you want to look at that representation and make sure you have the different areas fixed. But say I have ten administrators, like, yeah, I don't really need ten administrators on the ad hoc committee. So, you know, we can have that discussion and or then do a lottery. I'm just going to be, yeah.
All right. The other thing to remember is a number of people will be wearing multiple hats here. Parent or staff member or community member, right?
So I, I'd wonder more about the ratio of, you know, if you group all the admins and teachers together, then you group the community parent together. And let's keep the ratio, I didn't even, you know, the community.
That was, sure. That was one of the questions. So, uh, right now, if you group those together, we've got two school board members, six to eight school representatives and then six community members. Um, so, I mean, maybe boosting up the community members to eight as well, um, to, so where, so where the, the school representatives and the community representatives kind of match one another at, at the minimum mark cut it.
Yeah. As a minimum, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would think we want probably that at least a similar, you know.
Relative box move. Okay. No, it was four. I was saying four, not eight, but the total between the two groups. Sorry. From a ratio standard.
Yeah. Yeah.
From a ratio standpoint.
I, I like, what I think worked really well from that last committee is that the ratio was much higher on community representation.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't know whether it's eight or four. I, I don't think we'll have a problem getting.
Okay.
That unless you feel that that's too large.
No, I was just, I was, I was just saying, because I was, I was lumping that group together plus the, 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 the staff representative. So it may have so as eight and eight, but if you want to do four and eight and then have eight for the, the, um, school representative, that, that's perfectly fine with me. Um, so do, is there a budget for this? Or I mean, does it even need a budget? I haven't done that much. So.
I don't think we need a budget.
Okay.
No, everybody can write their own copy.
Like it? Okay. Any other thoughts? Does that look good from a minimums or do you want to see more? Do you want eight and eight from, you know, parents and community members?
Honestly, uh, from my perspective, I would say, I would say doing a yes, but I mean, that's really big. I think that's getting a little too big at that point then. All right. Please assume we're.
All right. Do we need a formal motion? And again, this isn't something that we're going to, um, again, this wouldn't start until August as well. We have time.
It seems to make sense to think of this in relation, we'll know what the state budget is, which may be July, July. And, and trying to do any kind of school committee in the month of July is not usually a good idea to start. So that's why August.
And, and I think that might get bumped. I think it's important to know what the state budget is before even commending. Cause that's, again, that gives us what the next two years look like.
Yeah. Brief motion. Okay. Uh, I move to create the ad hoc advisory committee, uh, to renew the school board's future budgetary needs as presented.
Sir, second. I'll second it.
So remove the second to create an ad hoc advisory committee to renew the school board's school district's future budgetary needs as presented.
And Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mr. Gavin.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yes.
Mr. Scaram.
Yes.
Ms. Colton.
Yes.
All right. Yeah. All I, in regards to announcements, I'm just wanting to check in and see if there's any, um, special requests for any future agenda items or committee meetings, um, for a general board meeting or meetings.
I actually have a question. I didn't realize that this was, it's a procedural question, but I know that that survey has come up a couple of times in details and whatnot. Can, can we, can we request to put that on the agenda for the next thing to talk about?
It's going to the, um.
I scheduled it to go to the policy committee.
Okay.
So then, and any board member can attend a policy committee meeting and then it always, whatever recommended from there, things are stated for this. Yeah. So it's our. Uh, that's all we have. And we just, can we do that in closed session this evening?
All right. I would look for a change in the session.
I move to adjourn to, uh, to a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five. See, to discuss employee compensation, employee contracts and potential transfer of professional staff.
All right. So moving this segment to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five. See, discussing employee compensation, employee contracts and potential transfer of professional staff. The school board will not re, will recommit an open session for actions appropriate and or due to.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yeah.
Mr. Gavin.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yes.
Mr. Scaram.
Yes.
Ms. Colton.
Yes.